I call to order the City of Buellton's Planning Commission for Thursday, May 19th, 2022. Vice Chair Mercado, will you lead us in the pledge?
Hand over her.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under the law.
Roll call. Commissioner Block, absent. Commissioner Liggett?
Here.
Commissioner Sarkia?
Here.
Vice Chair Mercado?
Here.
Here. Reordering of the agenda, none. Presentations, none. Approval of minutes of the regular planning commission meeting for April 21st, 2022. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the commission meeting of April 21st, 22nd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I will abstain because I was absent. Public comments, this is where members of the audience wishing to address the planning commission on matters not on the agenda may do so at this time. At this time, we currently have no members in our audience. Consent calendar, none. Continued public hearings, none. New public hearings, resolution number 22-05, a resolution of the planning commission of the City of Buellton, California, approving a lot line adjustment 22-LLA-01 tree move an existing lot line between lot three and lot four of parcel map 31035 and making findings in support thereof. Ms. Tucker?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the planning commission. So as Chair Hamill read, this is a resolution for approval of a lot line adjustment. This application was filed by Central Holding Group. Edward St. George is the sole managing member and Gavin Moores is the applicant. And this property is located at the southern terminus of industrial way. It is on a property, let's see if I can manage to. Okay, this is not working here, but let's see, there we are. So this is, the property is shown on the vicinity map here. This is the property that was previously approved for the network that was processed by Gavin Moores for development. They later changed the name to the station and we just now refer to it as BWE5. It's a lot easier to keep it straight. So there is an existing entitlement, final development plan that was approved on this. As part of that development plan, there was also a lot line adjustment that was approved. However, that lot line adjustment had a 24-month shelf life during which they needed to submit for approval a final lot line adjustment map, which they did not do. So in order for the project to move forward, the applicant has had to file a new lot line adjustment application. So whereas the previous application was filed on behalf of Gavin Moores, the property now has a new owner. So this was filed from Central Holding Group, Edward St. George. So I included in the packet, just for reference, the prior approval by the planning commission of the final development plan and the previous lot line adjustment out a little bit. So as you can see here on the map, vicinity map, this is two parcels. And this central lot line clearly runs down the middle of the property. So the subject lot line adjustment is to move, is to remove the existing lot line that runs to center of the project site, which currently separates the two lots. The lot line adjustment would make the property one lot in order to comply with setbacks and building code requirements. And proposes a merger of parcels three and four of parcel map 31,0035. The existing size of the two separate acre, two separate parcels, parcel three and four combined are the same as the new lot would be, which is for combined total of five acres. There would be no new lots created and the lot line adjustment does not result in any changes in land use or density. And no additional easements are required to accomplish the lot line adjustment. This project is exempt from the requirements of CEQA. It's a, it only involves a minor lot line adjustment with no new lots. It's a classified categorical exemption. And included in the packet or attached to the recommendation is the actual resolution, which has the conditions of approval. And they're a very short set of conditions. There's planning and general, planning department in general conditions, which are standard conditions. And then there's a few engineering conditions, which are the same as were part of the previous approval. So I am available to answer staff's recommendation that the planning commission consider the adoption of resolution number 2205 as read by Chair Hamill.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Irma?
So is it that line that goes straight down from the top to the bottom, the straight line?
Yes.
Okay.
It is, it is the straight line. Yeah. Right, yeah, disappearing, but it is, it is the straight line. And it coincides, and you can see better on this vicinity map, it coincides with that blue line that dissects, bisects the the property and it would also bisect buildings, which is not, not, not allowed. So.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Liggett, any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Is this proposed lot line removal in response to their project of the network station in order for them to actually complete or start that project?
So this, this lot line adjustment was previously approved as part of that final development plan entitlement action for the station slash network. But because the lot line, the final lot line adjustment map was not recorded within the 24 months as required by our municipal code. They needed to come back for a new application just for the lot line adjustment portion. The final development plan, the entitlement for development is still valid.
When is that expiring? It sounds like it was five years ago?
Five, that's a five-year initial term. And so that, that was approved.
December 21st, 2017.
2017, so that's, that would, would go through December of this year. And the applicant is entitled to request two one-year extensions for that project. We do have the applicant in the audience, if the chair would like to invite Mr. Gavin Moores up and to say a couple of words. And perhaps he can address some questions about the project moving forward if.
Would you like to join us?
Thank you. My name's Gavin Moores. Appreciate the time. It's a relatively simple process, but to answer the questions that have just been raised earlier, we will be building this year. That is mandatory. We already have gone through two rounds of plan checks for grading right now. We'll be submitting architectural plans. We have tenants that are now signed pretty much, we haven't signed an exact final lease with them. But we've got final floor plans that they need, so time is of the essence. So I think this is one of the hurdles that we needed to resolve. Yesterday I had a whole bunch of communications with TerraVon in regards to easements that we needed to finalize with them. We're down to two issues there. It's full speed ahead, so I will not be needing an extension.
That sounds.
Famous last words now.
Good to know.
You know, that's what it is. I mean, this is just a simple step.
That's.
Merging the two parcels, I think it's going to make it a lot easier for, obviously it's a condition, so it's one less that we've got to comply with. It's marked off as being completed.
Okay, great, thank you. And since we are under a public hearing, I'll open it up for the public to comment. And we do not have anyone in the audience to comment, so I will bring it back and close the public hearing. Any further comments or does anyone have a motion?
Okay, but I'll make the motion to approve resolution number 22-5 as stated.
Second.
And roll call, please. Vice Chair Mercado?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarkia?
Aye.
Commissioner Liggett?
Aye.
Chair Hamill? Aye. So motion passes four to zero. Congrats and good news on all of that.
I'm glad to see a project come.
Start.
Getting started post haste. Some of these projects just take forever.
Yeah.
Pretty appreciated.
We're very fortunate. And it's timing, it's just putting out the, pretty good, this particular tenant.
Glad we could help.
Okay, and then other business. For a second. Other business informational item, Buellton Community Garden. Irma, are you leading us on that?
I'll kick it off and then I'll turn it over to Erin. So I'm just to introduce this, this item, and it is an information item, which we thought the planning commission may enjoy hearing about. On May 12th, city council discussed a request from a local resident to utilize the city-owned parcel at the southeast corner of Second Street and Central Avenue for the creation of a community garden. So this is the parcel back of Houston's liquor. So the, the garden would allow residents without their own space to have the resources necessary to grow fruits and vegetables. An additional benefit would be the beautification of the site as it now exists in a vacant condition. The resident, Annie Akoudis, made a presentation to city council, which included several concept designs prepared by a landscape architecture students from Cal Poly. The city council had a favorable reaction to the request and they all voted unanimously to vote forward with the, with the project, with the effort actually of creating this community garden. The council's direction to staff was to investigate this further, as there were some items that they needed more information on. And Annie was being asked to bring back this additional information along with an agreement to lay out the terms for the city council to consider. And so as the commission may know, it was Erin Liggett's class that prepared the concept designs. And he was offered to just give a brief talk about his students' work and share some of the designs that were presented with the planning commission. So with the chairs.
Great.
And I would like to turn it over to Erin for the presentation.
Is it Commissioner Liggett or Professor Liggett?
Oh.
Yeah, we chat, are you going to put on?
I'm going to go ahead and share my screen.
I think you've got the permission to do it. There you go.
There you go. So this project initiated with a conversation with Annie Akoudis, who's been dreaming of a community garden here for years, it sounds like. And she recently started a nonprofit called Buellton Community Garden in order to achieve this or try to hide, to try to bridge this effort under. So I developed this project with my landscape architecture class, second year design studio class to imagine what a be, a, a community garden would look like at this, at this location. Project location is at the corner of Central Avenue and Second Street and right off of Avenue of the Flags. And it's within close proximity to affordable housing and apartment complexes. Buildings and families that don't necessarily have access to backyards to grow crops. So with that being quite an ideal location, we moved forward and, and this product property is city-owned. The challenge was to imagine what a community garden could look like on this lot. Here you see two existing photographs. And as I flip through some of the student examples, you'll know each of the projects overlaid their design over these photographs. So this is the before, these are the before images. And then shortly here, you'll see the after of what they imagined for their community garden. The public or anybody could see this, see this work if you go to buelltinggarden.org, which is the Buellton Community Garden nonprofit website, still under work in progress. But if you look at the top right under artwork, there's a page dedicated to this class effort. Just briefly explaining the process or what the students' mission was. The students did an incredible job. It was a three-week course, so, so three-week project, which is extremely close or short. And it started off with an initial site visit where we met with Annie and several other community members who have interest in this garden. And then rapidly put together some incredible design ideas. You'll notice, I'm just going to scroll through these quickly just to kind of show you the variety of different layouts and different programmed elements that they, that they included. And they all, all are very different. And each group also came up with a unique concept, which is, which drove their design. It drove the form of their design. It drove the program elements or the physical elements that were part of their design. And it was really, it was quite impressive what they were able to accomplish. I think the biggest insight that we gained from this was how much they could actually fit on what is perceived to be quite a small lot. So I think that's what was the most impressive of, you know, outcome of this, of this assignment. Students incorporated different elements, this concept. The law was just kind of split into two pieces, one space where you actually grow the crop. And the concept here was not only can you grow it, then you could prep it and then cook it and then have a social gathering. So almost all projects incorporated spaces for education, outreach, community gathering, in addition to growing the crops. So this is looked at kind of as a community asset as a whole, not just for the people that are paying for their, for their plots to garden. Here you see the after overlaid on those original two photographs. Each group included a fence, a barrier fence, you know, for security and a little bit of privacy. But the intention was not to make it look, you know, to keep people out. You know, they still wanted to have people, have it be porous, peer into it to see what's going on and not feel alienated. But you know, some sort of barrier there just to kind of give the suggestion that, you know, it's not free to walk through and, you know, take in charge crops. You see here, this one was inspired by a butterfly form and created a butterfly garden here with a greenhouse as a kind of a grand entrance. In addition to garden plots, they all included a greenhouse first, you know, for propagation, some sort of orchard. So fruit trees that could be, you know, for the general public or just for all the members itself. In several different types of gardens, such as native plant gardens, wildflower gardens, succulent gardens that all help support the natural ecology. So another example of what it may look like, these are some sinks and kitchens and outdoor classrooms that are within the space. Again, just notice that they're all so different, which really is a surprise to me always, the work they put together, the creativity that each group was able to, to synthesize and come up with. This concept was interesting. This group split this lot kind of in half here. One side being quote unquote private, which are plots that are for rent for the community. And the other, the other side was kind of an open space, what she called a food forest. A bunch of crops, trees, shrubs, ground covers, vines that all feed off one another. And the idea there is that the general public could come in and get food. So not just limited to the people who pay for the, for the, for the boxes, but it could, it could feed everybody. Now, that may be a far-fetched concept, but still an interesting one altogether. The idea here was that not one of these, one of these designs is perfect and will be built as is. But if just little, little nuggets, little segments could be pulled from several of these projects that could be implemented in, in different forms. Other than that, they, I think they did an incredible job, you know, creating a green space and a vacant lot that's for the community. Provides food, habitat, a place for the community to gather. Are there any questions from the commission?
Not a question, but just, I think it's nice, any project they did very good. Hopefully with, like you said, combination of multiple sections, I think it would work out pretty good. Especially like the fact that if you can just walk up and have someone purchase something like a farmer's market type thing that you know that's a, this is fresh right out of the ground there. I think that would be a great advantage here for the City of Buellton. So I would look forward to that.
Yeah, it is, it's an awesome job by the students. I guess my question would be then, how does the final decision come about or?
Well, as far as I understand, the, the city council gave permission to proceed with this.
Okay.
Suggesting that they would allow this nonprofit to, to design and build community garden and provide water for it. But a little bit more groundwork needs to be done, you know, Annie needs to kind of figure out details about security. Maybe some sort of funding and then, and that, and what it would cost. And I think Scott was going to determine what it would cost the city to provide the water. And after that, further research to make it come up with an agreement. It just sounds like it's very favorable and sooner than later, at least they'll get permission to use the land. And then from there, you know, be a slow process, getting things constructed. And he says she has a bunch of friends and members that are contractors, suppliers of plants and materials. So a lot of resources and volunteers that can actually get. So a lot of resources and volunteers that could actually get, they could make progress on building something for relatively inexpensive, was the idea.
Hey, that sounds great. I think we have another question.
One question for Erin. I know. Or this is a question to you. Is it possible to, for this nonprofit to find a grant from the state? Because I know down in Los Angeles, they have those community gardens, like what you're trying to do here. And, and the state does have some funding for that. Is that something that is on her outlook?
I believe so. She's definitely mentioned that she's studied a number of gardens, community gardens, and that, that is on her radar. Absolutely.
Perfect.
I think that'd be money well spent.
Yeah, right.
I'm really looking forward to something like that.
Yeah. Well, that sounds awesome. Thank you, Commissioner Liggett, for the presentation and, and for getting all your students to be part of that.
Thank you.
Okay, written communications, none. Planning commissioner comments, anything from you guys?
Oh, I, I had asked about the, the park over there by Oak Valley School a year or so ago that it needed some repair and, and maintenance. And I took the grandkids over there earlier this week and it, the park is pristine.
Oh, nice.
The grass and, and playgrounds are in great shape. I really appreciate that and so do the families that take their kids there.
Anytime, as always, especially with the parks, anytime you see something, just let us know because the guys try to check everything at least on a monthly basis and they're, obviously they're there every day, but it's easy to miss something, so the community is our eyes and ears too.
Good job. Um, Commissioner Liggett, any, just planning commissioner comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, so I have my annual announcement, which I haven't done for three years, I believe. The Saturday, May twenty-first is the Seventh Annual Saniness Valley Airport Day at our lovely Valley Airport. It's for all Valley people, not just Saniness. It runs from ten AM to four PM. It's free parking, free entry, free burger or hot dog lunch. There will be dozens of aircraft on display. The pilots are there too, to talk about their careers and/or their aircraft. There will be informational booths. There are also provided by the EAA and Young Eagles, there are free airplane rides for kids ages eight to seventeen. Anyone has any grandkids that age, you do have to sign up early online and it, of course, it depends on the weather. General information at SYVairport.com. Come enjoy another Valley gem this weekend. Yeah, if you.
Is that Saturday or Sunday?
Saturday, ten to four. And that's all I have, so do we have a, a interim planning director report?
I, I do have a report. Yes, so we do have baby news and y'all may have, may have heard about it, but Andrea, our planning director, she did give birth to a lovely little baby girl. A little over three weeks old now, right? And mom and baby and families are all doing great.
That's great.
Yeah, so that's, that's good news. And I just wanted to mention a couple of other items. The State of the City presentation is next week. Was it on the twenty-fifth, I think? Wednesday. Yeah. And one of the things the planning department put together for the presentation that Scott is going to incorporate among other information from the other departments, but we did update the the Avenue of Flag specific plan newsletter, what's happening on the avenue. So it's kind of a recap of the, you know, last two years. And so that will be available at the meeting to hand out. And we're, we're kind of proud of all the work that we've all done here. And so Scott will incorporate some of that into his presentation as well. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention is.
And that is, that is a breakfast from nine to eleven at the Marriott.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
The other item I wanted to mention is the, the Campus Thirty-Six project that had come before the planning commission for a concept review. The applicant is moving forward with a concept review in front of the City Council, tentatively scheduled for their first City Council meeting in June. And they have listened to the comments and listened to some of the, the issues that they need to address. And they have met with Rancho de Maria and they are coming back with some revisions to the plans and how they're presenting it and approaching the entitlements on it. So I just wanted to make the commission aware that that is moving forward. So it may be interested in watching that presentation, we'll let you know when that's confirmed, that, that's going before council, so.
Yeah, that's good. I, that was critical to get Rancho de Maria residents involved.
Yeah, yeah. So, and that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. With that, we will adjourn at six thirty-one.
Well done, ladies and gentlemen.